All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for coming tonight in this nasty weather. Welcome to our work session in preparation for our January board meeting. First of all, I'd like to welcome our new board member, Mr. Kirsten Bradford. I said it right?
Yes.
Kirsten, not Chris.
Kirsten.
Kirsten.
Yes, sorry.
So, welcome.
Thank you.
We tend to move a little quickly. If you get bogged down or something, just raise your hand, say, Bill, slow down.
Got it.
Our invocation and pledge next week will be by Ms. Malou, who is ill tonight. The Appalachia High School Junior ROTC will present the colors. We'll have an election of officers for the new year. We'll approve the minutes, we'll approve the agenda, we'll have some committee reports. And we'll have some recognition, quite a bit of recognition. It's gonna be a good week, have some good ones to start the year. Hey, to start out with, Dr. Green?
We have the communications report and the 80th Day of School Enrollment Report that are both there for your review. If you have questions, I'll be glad to answer them on the communications report, otherwise just letting you, reminding you it's there. With the 80th Day of School student count, we're 3% above where we were this time last year. We're kind of holding steady right at 14, 9, 10 at the 80th Day of Count, so we're moving towards 15,000 students, but we're slowing down in that movement. So, let us say if you've got any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, otherwise I'll let those reports stand there for you.
Okay, Ms. Houston?
Good evening. I'm going to go over the invoices paid between $10,000 and $24,999. Our threshold for purchases that the board approves is $25,000. When that happened, the board wanted to hear what we paid between $10,000 and $25,000. Not that they're gonna approve it, but they just wanted it for informational purposes only. So every month I'll come up here and tell you everything that we've paid between $10,000 and $24,999, just to keep you in the loop. So the first one is Senovia Solutions. It was paid out of capital projects for $23,640. And it is for the Senovia Here Comes the Bus and Student Ridership for 197 GPS units, 197 buses. And that's for district-wide. The second one is Learner's Advantage, paid out of consolidated funds for $13,500. And it's for professional learning for grades three through five for 12 days of professional learning out at Yargo Elementary School. The next one is Fire and Life Safety. It's paid out of the general fund for $21,615. And this is for fire sprinkler repairs. They come out and inspect, and then this is any repairs that they had to do over the hundreds and hundreds of sprinklers that we have district-wide. The next one is Georgia Specialty Equipment, paid out of the L4GA grant for $16,319. And it's for the Wanderboro High School Media Center Furniture. And of course, that's for Wanderboro High School. And that's all I have for the invoices. I do want y'all to know, remember that the Carl Vinson Institute is gonna come out here at the work session at the end of this month on the 31st. And they'll be reporting on the age-based property tax exemptions. They're doing that report for us to see if it's feasible for us to change anything. And we had about six citizens that have called since August about their property taxes, age-based property tax exemption. And I called all of them today and invited them out for the work session so they could hear the same report. And so they'll, a lot of them said that they would be here too, but not to speak, just to listen to what the report has.
All right, we can get that out to the media too, to make sure that, that everybody knows what we're doing now. So we want, if they wanna come or they wanna...
Listening by YouTube or something too, so they wouldn't necessarily have to...
It's gone out in our board reports, but we'll, we'll double check them.
I know, it sounds stupid. What is the age-based?
We have, you know, pay property taxes.
Right?
We give...
Okay, got it.
It's not only mention, a lot of the other, not a lot, not a lot, I don't wanna reverse that. A few of other counties in, in the Georgia.
Got it, okay. I was just curious.
But they're gonna give us a report to tell us if we change that, because right now it's at the top level, it's an $80,000 exemption. But if they have a $200,000 home, they don't have to pay property tax, but anything over that $200,000 value, they have to start paying property tax on. So we're gonna see if we can increase that, how much it's gonna cost.
Also income-based.
Got it, okay.
And it's become hot, especially now, because a lot of their homes, all of our homes have been redone, they've come up over 200,000 suddenly, and so they're getting hit with that.
Yeah.
And obviously, we wanna help them in any way we can.
Absolutely.
So we're trying to do this to see what we can do. That's kind of the name of the game.
Got it.
See what we can do.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burnell?
Good evening. Just give you a quick update on our building projects. We've been able to to stay busy here and stay active over the holidays and, and take advantage of this time off. I don't have this in here, but I'll tell you that at Bethlehem and County Line, which are summer, technically summer of 23 projects, the lights in those schools are being retrofitted over the break to kind of give us a head start there while no one's in the buildings. This is our new elementary school, of course, and we have the roof in place there, which, which is a big deal for us, obviously, particularly right now with all this rain. Windows being put in, brick is nearly complete. And the exterior stucco is, is well underway. Interior, we have lights going in. Other finishes, paint, ceiling grid, the air units as well. So they're, they're making steady progress out there at the new elementary site.
On time, under budget?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Bailey stood in for you last time you weren't here. He made sure to ask that question. This is our addition to Bassa, and as you can see from these photos, the site work is well underway there. They're, they're starting to to really get going with Earth moving there. And then our final update is the sports lighting. And so we've got the the softball field and the baseball field at Wanderboro, and the softball and baseball fields at Appalachia complete. So we lack the two stadium fields, getting those retrofitted. And we've run into some issues with weather and also the lift. So we're kind of fighting it right now to get those two wrapped up, but we have the materials here and we'll stay after that till we, till we get it knocked out. But it's made a tremendous difference, obviously. It's just, it's night and day out there from what it was before. That's it.
Questions? Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Dr. Moten?
Good evening. I am pleased to share information with you about Engage Georgia. And on the next slide, you can see in the bottom right corner there, this is a partnership between the Georgia Department of Education, Graduation Alliance, and a program that was started in 2021 called Engage Georgia. So Graduation Alliance has been around since about 2007, and their focus is on helping students complete their education, dropout prevention, alternative education, and some other programs have been their focus with over 650 different school systems. So their focus, like I said, is academic performance, resources. They actually focus on social emotional needs of students as well. And ultimately, we want our students to be college and career-ready. So that is why we are looking at this opportunity. So really, it's an added layer of support that we will have for our students. And as you can see, Graduation Alliance will help us in partnership with the Georgia, Georgia Department of Education, identify students K-12 who need an additional layer of support. And you see three bullet points on the screen there. We will identify students who have not engaged in their education, some of those students that we perceived as being lost or not returning to us after virtual learning, students who are chronically absent with five or more days, and then those students who have fallen behind and are academically at risk. On the next slide, so we know who we're looking for. There's three criteria of the students that we're looking to serve through this partnership. And then on this slide, you actually see what the process is, and there is a five-step process there. So students are referred to the program. And then students receive a counselor who is assigned to them as well as an academic coach. And so what happens is contact is made with these students, or there are attempts to reach these students through email, through phone calls, through text messages, any way that they can to try to use their platforms to identify where these students are, what they're doing, and to try to get them to reengage in school so that they can be successful. In connection with the family, as I said, there's an academic success coach, so they'll receive a welcome call. Students will actually have a personalized learning plan once they're engaged with their academic success coach. And then there's ongoing communication that takes place as well. Students also have a risk assessment profile created, and then there are records updates. And Graduation Alliance does a good job of providing the technology infrastructure for all of this to happen. There's actually no cost to families or the school system for this partnership. And then Graduation Alliance will report back to the school system to let us know how students are doing, what their progress is, and give us weekly updates for those students. On the next slide goes into a little bit more detail about what actually happens with that data transmission. As you can see, the logistical support is provided by Graduation Alliance. They give us templates, they transfer all of the data for us, and then it comes back to us at the state and student level. I'm also pleased to know that students will have a seat on what's called tutor.com. And that is a program that allows students to sign in, have access pretty much to like homework help and tutorials to help them be successful in those courses where necessary. On the next slide, you can see on the website, there are a number of resources that parents will be able to access. We're going to start with our graduation coaches helping us identify students. But as you can see from the resources here, parents will be able to identify and opt-in for their students if they feel like students can benefit from this program and service. So because of our, our desire to get a good footing with the program, since this is our first time in the partnership, we are starting with our graduation coaches, and we hope, we expect, and we hope that it will grow and that we will have some parents who identify students and say, my student needs help, so I want to enroll him or her. On the next slide, very fine print there, but you see a list of school systems in Georgia that are already partnered districts with Engage Georgia. And there are 81 school systems. It also goes on the next slide, Rochelle, if you wanna go back and forth between the two. The yellow highlight there shows districts in Arisa that are part of the partnership with Engage Georgia and Graduation Alliance. So you see Clark County, Jefferson, Madison, Morgan, Oglethorpe, and I believe Walton is on the next page. And from our, our conversations with other, other districts, they are pleased with the outcome and with the response that they've gotten with students. So there's really no way that we would not be able to add this as a service for our students, students who are in need, they're not at school, they need help with their academics, they have an academic success coach, and our graduation coaches are pleased to, as you can see on the next slide, Mr. Dean, Ms. Kramer, and Ms. Hagie are very interested in providing this service to students at this time. I do have Christian Shiverdepper online, as you can see here on the screen, and he's our representative from Graduation Alliance. So if there are any questions that anyone has, or Christian, if there's anything that I have missed, feel free to go ahead and join us.
You did an excellent job. I, I'm really excited about the program in the state. We definitely, just to add on, we have had a third-party efficacy study done as recently as just before the, the start of the school year. And some of the, the overall outcomes that we're seeing were that students who participate in the program, when compared to students who were referred to the program but said no, really experienced gains in areas of attendance, gains of credit earned, and graduation rate. So we know that there's definitely an efficacy involved with this program, and it's already seeing huge improvements with students within the districts that surround you. I look forward to, to getting a chance to work with you more on the program, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of those questions for you.
I have a couple.
Yeah.
Question number one, you're talking about, one of the ways to get this to parents is through English or Spanish flyers. Are they the only ones having problems with this, since we speak 50 some odd languages in our school system?
Not at all.
Get to the other kids, is what I'm saying.
We have, we train all of our academic success coaches to use tools to help bridge any kind of language barrier they may have with a parent or the student. But in particular, for our students, which the great majority are, but those Spanish-speaking or Arabic-speaking, we do offer in-language academic success coaching to better be able to coordinate with parents in particular, who tend to utilize that resource.
And we also have Language Line, which we use here too, that we could possibly make that happen too.
Yeah.
One of my questions, good question.
It, it's just that our population is so diverse. I don't want anybody to slip out of this. Second question is, we have an idea of what percentage of our students are gonna need this based on, I guess, before COVID, after COVID?
That's a great question for Dr. Moten.
Thank you, Christian. We do not have a number narrowed down at this time. As I said, we're going to start with the caseload that the graduation coaches have for right now. And we do expect that number to grow, because parents will be able to opt-in as well. So that is the number that we're going to start with, is with the graduation coaches and their caseload, and then allow it to grow from there. And we will download, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to stop real quick. And from our side, there's no limitation. So as many students as you determine need the service, we will provide until the program is full, and that's on a state level. So there is definitely room for as many students as you have that need this service.
Jamie Gordon was on a call with us when we were planning the partnership, and she will be able to upload files and share the data for the students as she runs the query to look at students who meet that criteria.
Okay. My, my last question, I think, is what do we do about the kids that actually have dropped out of the system? And we don't know if they're still in the county or not. How are we tracking the...
That's a perfect, perfect question. That is one of the three groups of students that we aim to find for you. This program started back at the start of the pandemic with districts who were already involved in our dropout recovery programs in the state of New Mexico. And they had reached out to us with that exact same question. The pandemic had happened, many students had disappeared, and they wanted us to find them. That was a cohort of 40,000 students in the state of New Mexico. And we went through our kind of enrollment process to find them through multimodal outreach, through phones, through text messages. We even got on social media, looking for parents of, of these students and the students themselves. We found 50% of them. And so if they were no longer attending school but were still located in state, we offered to help them re-enroll, get back in school, and then offered them that academic success coach to make the connection, help them get caught back up and give them the scaffolding they need to be successful, especially coming back to school from not, not attending actively.
Christian, how is your program funded?
Great question. So originally, we came in to Georgia through the Office of Dr. Bronwyn Reagan Martin, the Deputy Superintendent of Rural Schools and Innovation. They fully funded it for the state with the caveat that they wanted us to focus on rural schools. And then they, about halfway through the school year last year, they opened it up to all schools in the state. This year, it's a joint funding from both our rural and our urban schools. So we're really excited with the partnership we have with Department of Education.
And it's a difficult finding team, staff for your program?
Oh, no, not at all, because we are a national program, and we're servicing over eight states. We scale up as needed to be able to supply the, the need really, from the schools that are participating in the program.
Seems awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Great question.
Yeah, with the grade levels. Is it just high school or is it all the way down?
K-12.
In the state of Georgia, yes, it's K-12 program.
I have a question. The students that are in and out with foothills, because we're not sure what's going to happen with the state with foothills, are they gonna be eligible for this as well?
Yes, we plan to include students who are part of foothills, and Christian, that's our another one of our alternative education opportunities for students, students who are, are credit deficient or who can be more successful in another setting than the traditional K-12 setting. So...
Their ideal, this is an ideal support for those students in those programs, yeah.
I know one of the, a friend of mine, his grandson's in it, has dropped out of foothills a couple times, because the issue has been supposedly not having tutors when he needs them, I guess, on the schedule. So that was a big thing that you mentioned, like go on the tutor.com.
And our academic success coaches, they have an extended availability. So from seven o'clock in the morning before kids are going off to school, or they're even working to as late as seven or eight o'clock at night with these students. And then, of course, the added support of tutor.com, which is available 24/7.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Great presentation. I'm really greeted here.
Thank you, Chris.
My pleasure. Take care.
All righty. It's great. Ms. Betts? And Dr. Thompson? Don't have anything to clarify? I'm gonna send agenda, old business. Dr. Green?
Okay, so I came to you before the last meeting to ask you to put policy IKBC, Materials Harmful to Minors Complaint Resolution Process on the table for public review. You did that. It's been available for public comment, and we have not received any feedback from the public. So at this time, we would ask that you remove it from the table and approve a policy IKBC Materials Harmful to Minors Complaint Resolution Process. And this will be the last legislative mandated policy change until they get busy here in a couple of days.
We got it done before they got back.
Yes. Consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes. All righty, new business. Okay, I've got the first two here.
Number one, number two are just our annual affirmations. The first, number one, being affirmation of the strategic plan for the district and the vision, mission, and beliefs of the district. And then number two being the affirmation of Policy BH, Board of Education Code of Ethics. Basically the same thing you all also sign off on, but several years ago, board wanted to do both of those annually to kind of recommit and start the year off right. And so we'll have those two ready. They are posted there, since you're not familiar with them, and we will ask you to vote on those next week.
I hope we're familiar with them.
Dr. Green, you're back.
Okay, yeah. And guess what? I have a policy revision that has nothing to do with any mandate from the legislature. This is policy EBBF Safety Inspections, and we just discovered in rereading some of our policies that we've changed responsibilities for who's the primary contact for safety inspections. And so we wanted to make that change, and so we changed the title Director of Maintenance to Chief Safety and Security Officer, because that's the person, that's the staff member who's the primary lead in these safety inspections now. We also, in the next sentence, realized that there's some additional agencies that we partner with to perform these safety inspections, and so we added those there. We added Georgia Emergency Management Homeland Security Agency and our local emergency services agencies, because we partner with all of these agencies in doing safety inspections in our schools. And so we wanted to bring those two changes to you as a policy revision and ask that you place this on the table until the next scheduled meeting of the board, so that we give opportunity for the public to have input.
Consent agenda?
Yes.
All right, and since we're in a new year, we're gonna start with some confessions. And that is that when I was with you last, we did school-based mental health services. We talked about three aspects of a partnership that we have with social empowerment to provide mental behavioral health services, mental health services to our students and also support their parents. And unfortunately, even though I described all three aspects of this program, I only asked you to approve the funding for one part of this, and that was for the behavioral health services for underinsured students. And so if you'll look at the financial impact, you'll see that $33,000 was what you approved at the December meeting. I failed to bring you the next $77,000 worth of funding, and that is the Parent Support Program, which is $28,000 from Title IV and $35,000 from ARP for a $63,000 total. And then the Summer Enrichment Program is $10,000 from Title IV and $4,000 from a grant we received through the Publix Register Campaign. So add those 63 and 14 together, that's $77,000 that I failed to bring you at the last meeting. And I would add, ask that you add that to the approval that you gave for the $33,000 that you already approved and approve the remaining of that funding for this partnership.
Ken, since we have a new board member, who might not be familiar with all of our terminology.
Yes, ma'am.
Or old members like me, who sometimes forget.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell us what ARP is?
American Recovery Plan, those federal, federal dollars that we got.
COVID dollars.
So it's COVID dollars, basically?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Anything else?
Consent agenda? Ms. Houston? On your way.
All right, so we want to get furniture in the new elementary school. So the superintendent recommends accepting the highlighted price per line item on the attached bid tabulation sheets for classroom, office, and cafeteria furniture at the new elementary school in replacement or growth throughout the district. The total cost will be approximately $823,548. We are also asking for a contingency of 10% for adjustments in quantity and permission to go to the next lowest bid if the product standards or timeliness of delivery becomes an issue. So the total would be $905,000, $905,903 out of our E-Lost or, or Capital Projects Funds. A request for bid was issued for classroom furniture to furnish the new elementary school, student and teacher classroom furniture administration, office furniture, and cafeteria tables. Nine vendors responded. Recommendations are based on best price, most durable product, uniformity of products, and timeliness of delivery. So the cost will be, we're asking for $905,903 out of E-Lost Capital Projects, and of course, that would be the most. Of course, we're gonna try to get under that amount as best we can. I looked at just for, I don't think I can say the word in giggles. I looked back at 2019 at what we were looking at furniture, and a student desk was going for $51. Now it's $89.99, so prices have gone up anywhere from 20 to 76% on some items. It's just a shame that this is when we have the growth, is when the prices are going up so sharply.
Any questions?
I mean, how do you, how do you, like, you have bids, but you have a budget too, or have...
We just get the bids, take the lowest price, multiply it times the number of students we predict it's gonna be at that school, and then that's how we come up with the budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, we have a budget that we set every year as well.
Now, that's for the general fund. We'll go through that, yeah. That will be our, our April, whole month of April, yeah.
Consent agenda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Good evening. Rochelle, if you can open that calendar, thank you. In December of 2021, the board approved two calendars, two student calendars, the 2022-23 and the 2023-24. And based on feedback that we got in December, we are asking for the board to approve a change for staff only. This will not affect students at all. But we had a staff planning day scheduled for the 21st. And we are requesting that that be moved to January 4th. And that will allow our staff to go ahead and have that extra day prior to the Christmas holiday. So, any questions? Any questions?
You had this throw in the board approved.
Mm hmm, yeah, they did not like that.
Well, it was actually initially um requested um by staff that we split them and have one in front and one in. Um, after the holiday, but that was really. In a year where Christmas didn't fall quite the same.
Right.
And so the effect was different.
Yeah, when when it was on a Friday or Thursday, it was that makes a little, makes it a little more palatable. Um, the other piece is that, you know, to have the full week in October, which everyone definitely wants to keep, that's one of the trade offs for it too, so. Consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Doctor Jones, welcome.
Good evening and uh happy new year to you all, I hope uh you had a a nice holiday. Uh I am here this evening to recommend a revision to board policy IHC class rankings. Um. Basically, as you are well aware, our um educational system continues to offer more and more to our students. Um, and as part of this, um we have made a really great relationship with our uh post-secondary educational institutions. For dual enrollment classes. Um, however, the way that our current policy reads has created a little bit of an issue um with. Uh, some of our students feeling the need to take classes outside of their normal school schedule. Um, to be competitive with class ranking. And so the revisions that we are recommending um are designed to um. Weight the classes um that students take as part of their normal schedule and that have a course number. From the Georgia uh Student Finance Commission. Um, by weighting, what I mean is uh we in our district um. Reward students for taking more difficult classes by giving them a weighted score, and so, for example. Um dual enrollment classes get one point one rather than just a one weighting. And so um students can still take classes outside of. Um, their schedule if they choose to, um but the revision of this policy. Um, will not weight those classes, and so if students are truly interested in taking a class outside of um. Their normal schedule, we'll still have that opportunity to do so. And so uh the high school principals and I have been discussing this um really since the beginning of the school year, trying to come up with something. Um, that will um create a situation where our students don't feel so much pressure. Um, to go outside the normal school day to, you know, keep their class ranking, so um if the. Policy is revised and uh you uh approve it, um this will start on June first. Um, and so anyone that's already registered for a class this semester, there would be no change. And so um uh the super, the superintendent recommends placing um this policy revision of IHC class rankings. On the table for public review until the next scheduled meeting. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So this is for classes above and beyond, for lack of a better term, a full load.
Correct. So if a student, for example, was enrolled in their four classes at one of our high schools and then decided to take a fifth class outside of the normal school day. Uh could also be summer classes where students during the summer decide they want to go take classes outside of. Um, what would be a normal, they don't have a school schedule during the summertime, so.
Yeah, it's insanity. So they get no crap, they get no ranking credit for that, that's what you're saying.
Well, if they choose.
They do get it, right?
Yeah, they do get it right now, and that's what's kind of created the situation where students, you know, I mean. The good news is our students really care about their academics. The the, un- unfortunately, it it gets to a point where I think it becomes detrimental to them, they they need their downtime, they need. Um, you know, to focus on some things besides their already difficult classes, and so this is designed. You know, if a student truly wants to take one, they can still get the credit put on their transcript, it just won't receive that extra weight.
So my question is. If they choose, if if you're talking about outside the school, I take it you're talking about what?
These are dual enrollment classes that we're discussing, and each student has four slots, if you will.
Right.
And so any, if they took three dual enrollment classes in as part of those four slots, those would get their weight.
Okay.
If they took four slots and then took an additional fifth slot, this class out here would not get the waiting.
So let's suppose they wanted to take a course during the summer at Lanier Tech. We're saying they wouldn't get the extra weight.
Correct.
Why not? I I I just don't understand.
Well, because what's happening is, let's say one person decides to take a course like that. Solely because they want to get that weighting. Well, now these other students are also feeling the pressure of, I need to take one too, and so. What we have are students who might normally not do that, choosing to do that because they do care about their class ranking. And so what we're trying to do is prevent that from happening, and if someone truly wants to take that course, great, I mean, they can still take it, but. I think what's happened is it's become a way to increase one's GPA rather than solely something that I want to take because of my personal interest, for example.
That makes sense, Lynn.
It's creating the.
Artificially trying to.
There are. We need to. Work harder at encouraging students to take extra courses. If it enables them to do better when they graduate from here, I understand what process is, but I think this. Uh if I had to compare this, I would say it's sort of like. I don't want to use the term dumbing down, but saying to students, we don't really want you to take extra courses that might help you. We're more concerned about being fair about who's gonna be valid.
Well, let's be specific about what we're talking about here, just just give you a specific example, so um you can have. This is, and I, I don't, I don't know this for a fact, I get the feeling that this has happened in years past, especially that senior year where there's so much pressure. On those top, top two or three or four students to get that, you know, top class ranking, valedictorian, salutatorian. Or just top ten kind of percent ranking, there's just a lot of pressure, I mean. Self-inflicted, parent-inflicted, I can't, you know, I can't comment to that, so, so you you can, you can have a a a really. Bright, several kids, right? That that have worked during the regular system and worked very hard to keep their grades at the very highest level. And not gone outside to do extra classes, to get kicked out of that top ten percent or get kicked out of that lot, top five percent. Or the top spot or the second spot by a child who's, I I agree with you, it's great for kids to want to learn more. But by a child that that kind of came out of nowhere. And took a lot of extra classes through the summer or throughout the end of the year to to. I don't think artificial is the right term, but to really boost their GPA. For the specific purpose of class ranking at the end of the year, at the end of the senior year.
Sort of like the real world.
What's that?
It's sort of like, only one person can be number one, that's the problem, and and so you got a lot of kids who are really bright, who are really. But only one person can be number ones, it's kind of one of those things where it just, it's really hard for the kids because. In the end, these kids are, they're working their butts off, you know, and they're, they have to be. The colleges nowadays, they don't want you to just be good at one thing, they want you to be good at everything, so you gotta, they gotta go to practice, they gotta be good on test. They gotta make the highest SAT, they gotta do this, and then this one kid per se is. Taking college classes in the summer and doing this while they're being told they gotta do sports and they gotta do, and in the end, it just becomes. It's really just a mental health thing, so I think what we're saying is. Focus on the school year, you know what I mean, where there, whereas these classes that you go take in the summertime, you're gonna get the credit for them. You're still gonna get the college credit, that's not what they're saying, they're just saying it's not gonna count, it's not gonna be weighted. You're not gonna get that extra GPA boost, whatever you do during the school year is still gonna count. You're just not gonna get that extra GPA boost, whereas if you take it during the school year, it does. So it just ma- means what you do during the school year is what counts for your GPA, that's all they're saying.
And a lot of the courses that they're taking are good courses, but they they. Aren't really what we would call core courses, they're.
Yeah, core.
They're more elective courses, those type of things also that. Just because they're at the college level, they get weighted, if um, for example, there may not be a. A comparable, we we started waiting them to to make it equitable between the kids that took dual enrollment and the kids that took. AP courses, basically, and honors level courses, and what we have seen happening is some of the. Students are during the summer or in the evenings are taking courses that are not AP type courses or not honors. Level courses, but they're getting a higher grade waiting for it, and that's.
Okay, well, that would be an issue.
That's the issue. It's not, I mean, picnic or courses still looks great for college acceptance because you're. You know, instead of just doing the minimum twenty four courses, you may have thirty. But when you start waiting all those other seven horses or or six horses differently, that's not fair. To other kids, they don't have the, and it's a little discriminatory for kids that have to work here in the summer. Um, is is one of the pieces I kind of fell down on too, um having been one of those kids myself. Um, you know, they work all summer doing that part, they can't. They they fall out of the competition when they're probably the ones that, you know. Be right there too, but the lack of opportunity becomes an issue.
Well, my, and I get that, you know, I I.
It's a sticky weight, I mean, honestly. You know, class ranking, sometimes I think it is just a futile.
Garbage.
Um, thing, but it, you know, in until the higher education comes around to that, we're gonna have some kids that stress themselves out every year. And, you know, and it's good to have those goals and shoot for those, you know, to be number one, and we all do that in our careers and everything else. But we also see a lot of kids going out super stressed that have trouble with the real world too, because they can't. Once they get past that, once you get into college, why do you ever go really look at that again anyway? Um, so, uh it, you know, it's a sticky wicket, but I I think this is a good compromise on on. Making it, making it as right as we can for our kids.
It would be, you know, having one of mine that took all AP and honors classes. And we didn't have it where she could take the dual, I mean, it would have been really harder, it's not as easy as it is for the kids nowadays to take the dual enrollment. And you're working your tail off, I could see if you've got somebody else taking something that's not. At that level and you're working and you're working and you're working, and then they come in and undercut you, that would be. A real hard thing, you know, for a student. Uh that's like getting knocked out, you know, right out from under your feet when you worked all those years and you're taking that level of course.
So our consent agenda item is for this to be for public review, this is not. Right, the consent is for public review, not consent for.
We would be voting on it.
Yeah, so this is consent for for public review, which I'm in favor of consenting.
And I, and I take it that this additional weight will not be assigned to rates transferred to very kind of schools is to keep folks who come in here. Their senior.
They've already done that loaded up, yeah, and we've had that happen before too.
Alright.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Sinclair.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I I feel like a bit of a broken record coming up to you, the last few times I've been up here and telling you how difficult technology purchasing is right now. Technology purchasing is really difficult right now. Um, and uh the situation uh in China actually has gotten worse since the last time I I came to talk to you. With uh the explosion of COVID there and cities being shut down, so.
Well, if we send you over there.
Joe, kidding.
Um, so uh before we left uh on break, we were talking about what can we do to help the district be. Ready for any eventuality, and so we often have requests for technology purchases that come up in the first quarter of the of the calendar year. Uh, school funds, uh leftover federal funds and so forth, and so um. Because of the long lead time for purchasing and the difficulty competing for goods, we uh decided we were going to do our shopping ahead of time. Put some bids out, get some purchasing vehicles uh uh in front of us so that. We could hit the ground running when schools and departments do request purchases, that we've already got board approval for uh for competitive bidding uh purchases, so. Uh, in that vein, um in anticipation of schools and departments purchasing additional Chromebooks. In the first half of twenty twenty three, an RFP was posted, thirteen vendors responded, as you can see there. Um, the RFP language said that we wanted the uh response is good for at least the first quarter of twenty twenty three. Low bid responded Hypertech, uh USA's response expires January eleventh of this month. Um, so after the board votes, we would have a total of one day to use that response, this did not seem feasible. Second low bid respondent Dell of Round Rock, Texas met the terms of the RFP. They've done similar business with us before, they've guaranteed pricing through at least April twenty twenty three, and they're not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. The cost is three eighty two eighty seven per Chromebook. Uh, we've put a maximum purchase limit on it of two hundred fifty thousand dollars through June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. And that it would be from various school and department budgets. So the superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of Dell Chromebooks. From Dell of Round Rock, Texas, in the amount of three eighty two eighty seven per Chromebook. For maximum purchase total of two hundred fifty thousand through the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, is there a reason that we don't want to use Hypertech?
I I I would love to, um except we literally can only use them for one day, you're you're gonna vote on January tenth. I I don't currently have any requests for purchases.
Yeah, this is.
This, this is just a vehicle.
Okay, so you don't really have any, you're trying to get this ahead.
I'm trying to make sure that when someone says I have money and I need product and it's available, I can go immediately and avoid the issues we've had in the past.
Any other questions? Consent agenda.
Well, I just, if if they're that much cheaper than Dell. Why don't you just buy two hundred and fifty, order two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of whatever that is?
I I don't have a budget for that, um I I don't know. Right, I I don't know who's gonna be purchasing them, what budget they'll be coming from, this this year, for instance, I don't have any Chromebooks going into life, so I don't have a need. On my side to buy any.
Not only that, by the time we need them, there may be new technology that's included in the price.
It's always a difficult thing about how long do you let something sit on a shelf burning a warranty.
Right.
Before you know you have an need for it.
Burning the warranty is a great one.
Well, should I get one of those?
Yes, ma'am.
Waiting for a year.
Come, come see me after you vote. Right, thank you, um in that same vein, uh Chromebook cart RFPs, these are the the thirty device carts where they. Store the Chromebooks and charge them when they're not in use, uh in anticipation of school requests for Chromebook carts. In the first half of twenty twenty three, an RFP was posted for a particular model, Joey thirty device Chromebook carts, nine vendors responded. Um, days after confirming the bid response, so my my habit after receiving all the responses is. Reviewing them, making sure I understand what the dollar amount is, I send it out to all the vendors to give them a chance to confirm. That I have accurately represented their response, uh and after that process, and after I uploaded this to Eboard. Um, the low bid respondent, AKA, uh emailed me to notify me they would not be able to honor the bid response. So, second low bid respondent, SCW met the terms of the RFP. Has done similar business with the district previously, and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. The cost of uh the cart is one thousand ten dollars per cart. Again, from various school and department budgets, up to a maximum of fifty thousand dollars, five hun- fifty thousand five hundred dollars. The superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of Joy Chromebook carts to second low bid respondent SCW. For one thousand ten dollars per cart, up to a maximum total purchase of fifty thousand five hundred through the rest of this fiscal year.
Yes, Senator Jen, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. The uh, as part of our multi-year deployment of ClearTouch interactive panels, so we have been in. A five-year planned program to upgrade all of our classrooms to have interactive uh panels. Uh, and no longer the the old dying uh projectors, and this will be the last of this. Uh after this one, we will be ninety nine point nine nine percent complete in this district of everyone having ClearTouch panels, so we're very excited. See this uh come to fruition, uh as part of our multi-year deployment of ClearTouch interactive panels to all classrooms in the district. Panels are sought for Bethlehem County Line and the new elementary school. An RFP was posted, then three vendors responded, uh the low bidder respondent Tech Optics met the terms of the RFP. They've done similar business with us before, and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. Um, we are requesting a total of um hundred fifty panels. Which comes up to six hundred eighty two thousand, two hundred eighty seven dollars for ITS SLOSS Technology Refresh and Construction Funds. And also authorization for up to an additional hundred thousand from various school and department budgets. For any of that schools or departments want to purchase that are outside of our plans. Um, the superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of ClearTouch interactive panels to low bid respondent Tech Optics of Winder, Georgia. In the amount of uh four thousand five hundred forty eight dollars, fifty eight cents per cart. Hundred fifty panels for total of six eighty two, two eighty seven, and to further authorize the. And to further authorize the use of this RS, RFP for additional panel purchases until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. To a maximum additional purchase of a hundred thousand dollars.
Questions? Consent agenda?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Colonel.
And we are asking the superintendent to recommend. Smallwood, Reynolds, Stewart and Stewart and Associates for Architecture Services for renovation and modification projects at Hammond Morse Middle School. And Winder Barrel High School. Um, this particular firm submitted proposals along with others. Back in December of two thousand seventeen. They scored extremely well. Their fees remain the same, uh, which is five percent of the cost of construction. Uh, they've performed uh, other projects for us and have done very well. These include uh, the addition to Westside Middle School. And renovations at Westside Yargo and renovations to the two-story additions. At Bramlett, Kennedy and Yargo. Uh, we need them to help us uh, with assistance in planning, design and construction administration for these projects. These projects are eligible for state capital outlay funding based on their age. And the work would take place over two summers, uh, summer of twenty twenty-four. And twenty-five. And the scope would include HVAC replacement and upgrading of the building finishes. Floors, lights, paint. Uh, as well as any necessary site improvements that might be needed. Uh, these are the last two projects of the last five years. We've basically been to every school. To grab our state money. Based on the age of, of our facilities. Um, and so. Uh, Bear Creek would kind of be the next one eligible and that, that would still be years away. Um. Our current SPOLOST would have to be. Extended. Voters would have to approve to extend that for us to perform this construction work. Uh, but we do want to get ahead of it. And begin the design process, um, so that we're ready for that if the SPOLOST program uh. Is extended. I'm happy to answer any questions on my half.
Any questions? Consent agenda? Yep. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Dr. McMike, alright, um. For you got a draft resolution, um. For the support of the Foothills Education Charter High Schools. If you. I've been keeping you all posted and um. Little bit going on, just a quick recap. On um, what's going on with Foothills. It's actually going on with three institutions, Foothills. Charter, social charter, uh, and. Kind of the, I guess you call it the grandfather of these type of. Uh, Mountain Ed, which has been around for years, um, mountain education. Um. Last year, legislation legislators passed a uh. A bill that. For all intents and purposes, may shut down Foothills and, and the others as we know it. Um, so there's been a, a lot of grassroots and, and a lot of districts they've utilized. Uh. Their services and that we're partnered, that are partners with them also to uh, to. Try to get some. Be blunt, some common sense. And get something changed in it. It, it came about and, and I don't disagree with this at all. Um, is that, um, their Foothills and the others are a little bit overfunded and I honestly, I agree with that. I think legislation. Legislators were right to take that piece of it. Oddly enough, that kind of came. To light because uh, the folks at Foothills basically reached out to the legislature and said, or the DOE and said. You're overfunding us. We, we want to give you some of this back. And that turned into, oh, okay, well, let's look into everything else is sometimes want to happen quickly. Uh, what is it? You call it Miss Stevens, the most dangerous forty days of the, of the year.
Year, yes.
Um, so. Basically what is passed and, and has went through is that they'll have to change the way they do business. Um, one would be to it, um, to become a service. Um, that's shared by a smaller group, um, which in puts more cost on us. Um, the other is to be a charter. Um, a county charter school, county by county. Which is pretty much a non-starter because, for example, if, if the thirteen of us in the recent wanted to utilize Foothills as we do now. One of us would have to take that on and, and bring the approval. Um, for that. So say if we did that, if Barrow, if Barrow County did that. Um, we would also have to take all the, all the uh. Would be happy to fiscal agent, we would also have to take all the scores for every other district that would be a part of a partnership. Um, which, you know, that's something you don't have any control over. So it's. It's really, they're really kind of overlooking and, and it, um. The, the author of the bill actually during a, a state. Meeting with the state board a couple of months ago, back in November. Pretty much said what we all kind of thought and, but, but she, uh, she said it pretty clearly during that meeting. That um, they feel like that uh, boards of education superintendents are using these to uh, to dump kids in. Uh, which I took great offense to, uh, noticing he's been around a while. Remember Snowden, um, we had tried that on our own and. I did not care for the way that it was. Um, it looked like it was. The, the administration we had at that time may have been. Doing some things that we didn't want to do in Barrow County and we dismantled the school and. Uh, those things. And that goes to the other point is, you know, the other pieces, you should, this, they're saying, well, the district should be doing this themselves. Well, we've tried that and it didn't work here as well as it's working with Foothills. Uh, I think they're also not looking at the, um. The piece that a lot of kids and you, you first heard earlier that have already dropped out. Have a chance to go back in a night school. Uh, kids have dropped out because they've had babies, I mean, these type of things. Uh, it, it's just a. It's a great program and y'all have seen that those of you that have been on the board and this Bradford. Maybe familiar and if not, we'll, we'll get you up to speed pretty quick, but um.
Is it working? I mean, are there kids who are getting successful?
Oh, absolutely. Barrow is one of the, the biggest that really we pull in quite a lot. We actually have two sites now. And for a lot of our students and a high number of them are kids that have already counted against us, um, when it comes down to it. But we're able to talk them into going back and, and at least getting their degree, you know, whether, which is our goal, whether. Whether it counts, counts for us on the. On the kind of arbitrary points that they said or not with, with the graduation rates and testing and this type of thing. Our goal is to get a kid. To get a high school diploma. That's why.
Absolutely.
This. Um, and Foothills is, is helped us, helped every district. That's signed on with them. Coastal's doing it now and Mountain Ed's been doing it for years. But suddenly this has become an issue, um, that, you know, so. We should have more. Anyway, there are a couple of good bills that have been drafted, um. One in particular, Chris Irwin. Um, some of you may know Chris, uh, is, has that. Does look at the, the funding and I, again, I think the funding piece, I think because it's considered an alternative school, they do get more FTE funding than we would get for that student. So it. There is a little bit of uh, inequity there. That, that should be fixed and the folks at Foothills agree with that. Um, what it comes down to though is basically the dismantling. Um, this is not something we can afford to do as a system. Um, no other system could afford to do it. We might be able to give other systems and create something. Uh, but that's a lot of work. That's more positions, that's hiring teachers, that's, there's a lot that goes on. We can't do the, the. Beauty of their model is they, to me, is that they, you know, have part-time positions. But they don't, they're not paying teachers and other staff members benefits for the most part. Um, and a lot of our teachers and a lot of our counselors and folks, that's how they help make ends meet is by working part-time. Um. So I, I would. Would very much like us to, uh, and the board to, uh, to. Send a resolution down in support of them. A couple of other districts have done so already. I've written a letter. Um. Both personally and because I have, I have story after story of students that have gone, but my own daughter goes to Foothills. I'm gonna take some classes she needed to wake up. And so it's not, and it's, and again, it's not just the, the, um. I mean, a lot of great recoveries there and. I mean, I could go a story after story after story of how it's helped kids reach their potential. Um. And, you know, just even the economy, I think sometimes we forget, allegedly forget what an economic engine public schools are. I mean, our, our, just for our county, our teachers. Spend money, you know, they, they add to our SPOLOST. Funds, they pay property taxes, all these other things. And, and we know that. Research tells us that a student with a high school diploma is a positive, just looking at it from a numbers perspective, it's a positive economic impact. And somewhere in the range of three hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand. Over the course of their lifetime, increased income, less needs, less needs for community services and these type of things. Um.
So, has there been a delegation from the state legislature to actually go to say Foothills or whatever?
They did put one together to look into it. Now, what they did, I'm.
Do they actually visit the school site and talk to parents and teachers?
That, um, they've had some folks come in, you know, it's a little bit different rules under the gold dome of getting in to be able to come in and speak to others, but they have had some committees go out. Um.
I think perhaps you just need people at the state who actually know.
And know that have been there. Because I happened to be on the phone. With um, the grandmother, the child that's there that got back into it now that it's separate. They have one house, Everett Russell. And when he came in after he took a class. I was on the phone. He didn't know who she was talking to and I heard the. His whole demeanor had changed because he passed, he was now a senior. And he had hope back, that hope that I can do this. To hear a child's voice that had several days before felt like he was not going to do anything, but he realized he wasn't going to be able to get a job or keep a job. He wanted to get engaged. He's now nineteen. But he was not going to really be able to do the things that he wanted to do in life until he got a high school diploma. Because we had talked to him, play and talked to him, you know, about, hey, this is the reality of what you need to do. Yes, you got potential. But he had lost his hope and to be on the phone when he came in and showed his grandmother, hey, I passed this many classes. I did get help over there and just to hear his voice and he was excited. To change within a three-day period once he got back in. And now I'm a senior and I've done this and I've got hope and it was just. It made me feel good just to hear.
We ran the numbers and the model for us has run since we started with them eight years ago. Might have been nine now. Um, seven hundred fifty full-time students have gone through graduation, eight hundred seventy-five transfer credit students. From our, from our high schools have gone through and that, those aren't. Some of them graduated from Foothills, some of them transferred the credits back to us, graduated from us. Some had moved on somewhere else too and, and. But that's a, that's a large number of kids that may or may not have now. But we've gotten them through. In our schools, I think a lot of them, yes, absolutely, for those who've been efficient and is, um. Tailored to what they need, you know, I mean. Pregnancy, for example, that can put a child out for a year. And delay that. For a year where they can go to night school when the parents, their parents come home and can help out, that's a huge thing. I, I just, I really think it's short sighted. I think there may be some. Little bit of animosity out there for some other things that didn't pass in the past with a couple of the authors here, but. Uh, that's just my personal opinion, but.
Sounds like politics.
I really think that, um, show of support from our board, there's, um. Many of y'all have been to the graduations, you've seen the kids, you know, what, what they do out there. A lot of the teachers are our teachers. Yeah, again, as I said, counselors. It would be a, it would be a blow in a lot of ways. I think we can recover and get, get graduated, but it would, it would cost the district and cost taxpayer. Still thinking so. I think kind of the mindset is, you know, maybe within the perimeter, one thing, but not in rural and, and more suburban as we are. Um, I think they need to be expanding it. I know that. Folks down in southwest Georgia are clamoring for something like, like this, but they don't have it. Um, they. Love to see them actually expand and go, go down up to that area.
So I see that this template, that this. Resolution uh, specifically talks about some of our Stevens. I, I'm taking it that this is not a template that every school system is using, right? That all of those are writing letters in support.
Correct.
Or writing their own letters.
Correct. Uh, we, we, you know, we've looked at a few and. Kind of. Dove out there, we put our own. Numbers and everything in here and, uh. When, of course, I've already, like I said, as I said, I've already written a letter both personally and professionally. To the DOE and to the, the. Other powers that be about it and use our, our data there too. So it, it's not a form letter, a form piece. It's tailored for us.
Senate agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Well done. Alright, for this time, we're going to go into executive session. To discuss and deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation. Hiring disciplinary action or dismissal or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer. Or employee or to review, interview applicants for the position of superintendent.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes, at this time, Kirsten, we just go around a little.
Yes.